Okay, good evening, everybody. It is 6:00 PM according to my clock. And I'm going to call this April 27th City Council meeting to order. Will you all please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go through the roll call. I'll begin with Councilman Owen.
Good morning.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
Great, thank you. Good to have you all here tonight. So, it looks like a short agenda tonight. We only have a couple of items, and I'm looking for an approval of that agenda. Do I have a motion?
Making a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now on to the consent agenda, items one through five. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to staff reports. And it looks like we only have a couple of staff here tonight, which is fine. And we're going to begin with you, Chief Wagner.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor. Only a few things on my list tonight. COVID numbers continue to go down. Some of our outlying counties have had some issues with the new BA2 variant, but according to our meeting on Tuesday morning, we are looking really good. They're actually going to stop doing the weekly meetings, or I guess they're biweekly meetings now for public officials. So, only 11 new cases average per day, which is way down from, I think we were over 200 in some at one time. And no new deaths. Hospitalizations are only three for the entire week. Other than that, we had a pretty significant fire Thursday evening that went into 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. Crews did an amazing job, ended up coming out as a house fire, but was actually a greenhouse/barn next to a residence there at Cook and Collins Road out in the county. So, we ended up having ourselves, District 8 and District 6 helping out. Was able to save some pretty significant farm machinery there, but by the time it got called in, it was pretty well involved. Also, just a reminder that Nathan and Leo and their crews and police and fire and everybody are going to have the Public Works Equipment Day like we've done in the past, pre-COVID. So, we'll have all the different equipment that the city has available out on May 13th, on a Friday, at Memorial Park and the community center. So, fun to get the kids out there, and it's always a good time to watch them ooh and ah and give out stickers and stuff. And staffing is still our biggest concern in the Fire Department. Seems we lose more than we can bring on. So, Amanda Barclay is still teaching our academy here in-house. Our four folks are doing really well, and they're also in their second or third week of EMT class. And we had a test this last weekend, so we have four folks that are in background checks and stuff right now that we're hoping to bring on. One of those is a volunteer, and hopefully the other ones will come on as residents. So, we're slowly moving ahead, but unfortunately losing more to other agencies down south than we're keeping. But, that's kind of the ballgame right now out there with the staffing and recruiting problems in the entire region. So, thank you, thank you, folks. If you have any questions?
Any questions for the Chief? Okay, I'm going to move to you, our IT Director, Bill Chambers.
Good evening, all. Still working on email and net security enhancements, technology policy and plans. The City Scene Magazine is out, and we have been pushing that out article by article to social media. And the SCAD training room AV upgrades were completed, so that's exciting. The Safety and Wellness Committee projects, continuing to work on those. And the FTA, we've got a couple of big requests for documents that have come in, so working on those, helping support staff who are assigned to those, updating the IT job descriptions, and just scheduled our next Technology Committee meeting for May 26th.
All right, thank you. And on to our City Administrator, Charlie Bush.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Good evening, Council. Four items this evening. The first one I'm probably most excited about, and that is, we have a person who has accepted our Finance Director position after many months of recruitment, and we'll have her before the Council next Wednesday for confirmation and contract approval. Her name is Kelly Conken. She's a Cedar Woolley High School graduate. I sent you her information about a week ago. And we had several council members involved in the interview process, so thank you to those who could make it, and look forward to introducing Kelly to you next week and to the Council's consideration for that position. So, that will be a relief if we're able to get that filled, and we'll be able to move on to some other things. Second thing, the YMCA lease of the city's old library is in final draft form. It's actually been approved by the YMCA Board today, so that will be before you next week as well for your consideration, at least first read. And if you're feeling good about it, we can move ahead on that as well, and if not, we can take a little bit, whatever time you need. Third item, the Classification and Compensation Study. The RFP was due on Friday last week. We got four responses within the timeline at this point. At least three of those look a lot better financially for the city. We have not had our committee meet yet to decide which one we're going to go with, but we will come back to you nonetheless next week with a briefing on that. And then lastly, I was gone a little bit last week, Wednesday through Friday, because I was a part of a program with the International City County Management Association. The city successfully applied to be a host for the City County Management Senior Fellowship Program, which is a partnership between ICMA and the US Army, where cities and counties have an opportunity to host. And there were only a handful of selected places, but have an opportunity to host a senior person at a military installation. They get to come here for about a week, all expenses paid by the Army and ICMA, both for my trip to do the orientation as well as for their visit here, which will happen in a couple of weeks. And it's an opportunity for exchange and learning, to look at potential partnerships that can happen between military installations and cities, and we've certainly got some in the region that I'm interested in exploring. And also for the Army to, from their perspective, understand how cities work and be able to better reach out and have those relationships as well. So, we'll be hosting Lisa Blum. She's the Chief of Civil Law from Fort Hill, Oklahoma. She'll be here May 9th through the 13th, and I look forward to introducing you to her at our council meeting that week as well. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Okay, no questions?
I have a question, but I'm not sure. Is Chief Tucker going to be on tonight?
No, he's on vacation.
Okay, so then I can ask you then. Last week, we were talking about graffiti, and it made me think about the offender work program and when that will pick back up again. So, maybe since, maybe I could ask you, since he's not here.
Yeah, I mean, I have some limited knowledge of it. It certainly sunsetted before I arrived, but my understanding is we lost a key staff member that was a part of that program. It also sunsetted during COVID. That staff member had some unique skills. So, we're going to have a conversation internally about whether or not we can restart that program, just given the fact that we had a very unique person in that role, whether we could find somebody similar to that to continue it or not.
Okay. I think it's a great program, and I'd love to see it back. So, I'd be interested in seeing what you guys come up with.
Yeah. A lot of it would depend upon cost as well, if it's feasible, yeah. So, I just want to say that something that Charlie has really done well, as he's brought a lot of internships into the city, which has been fantastic, and one of the interns in particular has been very instrumental in helping different departments complete different projects. So, very cool, very glad that you've brought that. That's something new that we've never had here in Cedar Woolley, so thank you for doing that. Also, just want to let you know that Katie, and I can't remember her last name, I'm just embarrassed here, but Katie who started in building and planning, she's completed her first week and a half, and she's doing great. So, when you come into building and planning, you'll see somebody new behind the desk, and her name is Katie. So, my apologies, Katie, for not remembering your last name.
It's Katie Quinn.
Thank you, that's right. All right, moving on to, did I get all my, oh, no, Nikki Thompson, I'm sorry, our city attorney. Hi, Nikki.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have anything to add. I will be talking to you later.
All right, thank you. Just checking the board real quick, like, make sure I got everybody. Moving on to council members, Councilman Owen, do you have anything to report tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have not much to say. I did sit in on the interview with the hopefully new, yeah, okay, anyway.
New Finance Director.
I invited her to our little ship, and it's going to be exciting. I think she's going to be an excellent employee. So, I thank Charlie and yourself for inviting me to sit in on that, and I really enjoyed it, and that's all I have.
All right. Yeah, we put the invitation out to all the council members, and we did have a couple who said they were not able to participate, but very grateful to Councilman McGoffin, Owen, and Lavaca who did participate. All right, Councilman McGoffin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted a second. Councilman Owen, I was really impressed by the Finance Director, and I'm excited for her to start. So, the only other item I had was I had a meeting with a business owner today, and he had some interesting points that I'm hoping to share with John Coleman regarding impact fees and what we can do to increase our businesses here.
Oh, fantastic, great. Councilwoman Diamond.
Good evening. I don't have a whole lot to add that's new, just reiterating some of the things that continues to be presented to me as some disapproval, again, with the high-density housing apartments that are going in, but that, I mean, that's something that I hear was daily, now it's weekly. So, I'm just, again, passing that on as it is my duty to pass that along, as I'm advised. Other than that, with the weather getting better, we've got some speed racers down our streets, and so if that's something that I know police keep an eye on, but it is something, there's more kids that are kind of roaming around the streets and stuff too, jumping out, running on their cell phones, walking across the streets without looking. So, it's just something that we want to try to stay on top of here in town and keep everybody safe.
So, I have to let you know, and you'll probably be pleased to hear this, but I was actually parked on the corner of Puget and Ferry, and as I was climbing into my car, I saw somebody coming at a fairly high rate of speed and ran through the light without, or the stop sign without stopping, and our own Officer Rachel was there and pulled him over and took care of it. So, yeah, they're doing a great job. She came out of nowhere, I didn't know where she was at. She was just there, yeah. Councilman Burns.
It was good to sit in on the interview for the Finance Director. I was glad to see that we found a candidate that seemed like she'd work well with the city staff. And I also wanted to say that the Lions Club was happy to get a bench put in. I believe it's off at Central near Cascade Trail. City was nice enough to provide concrete for us, and then Mark Torset went ahead and took care of the hard part and got the bench installed, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, we'll be putting a plaque in later, probably next month.
So grateful to the Lions Club for doing that, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Great asset, the trail. Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie.
I don't have much tonight, other than last weekend was Woodfest, and it was a great success, and it was nice to see everyone come out and support it, so that's it.
Fantastic, thank you. Councilman Allen, welcome back from Mexico.
Well, thank you. Wonders of wonder, I have nothing to say tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you. As far as Parks and Recreation goes, Mark did get the agenda out, so we're excited about that, and looking forward to bringing some good ideas back to the Council to possibly vote on, and excited about this summer. We got a lot of good things happening in the Parks and Recreation area, so, thanks.
All right, thank you. I just have a couple of things. First off, our own City Administrator, Charlie Bush, was nominated and received the 2022 Call to Service Award. It's after more than 20 years of serving municipalities in Arizona and the state of Washington, Charlie is now serving here in Cedar Woolley, and they nominated him, the committee did, and he received the award. And they will be granting the award to him on May 4th. Pretty exciting. We're delighted for you, Charlie, and I'm sure it's well-deserved, and we're very excited to have you here. Lots of good things happening. Congratulations. The other thing is that I didn't, I was, thought maybe the Chief would be here, Chief, not the Chief, Lieutenant McCallrath would be here, to talk about the Drug Takeback Day. That is going to be this Saturday, April 30th, from 10:00 to 2:00, and bringing them here to the city. So, we actually have, backed by the Police Department, a, it's a special bin, I hate to call it a bin because it's very secure, but where people can bring their medications when they're not using them. And I want to thank the RISE Committee for doing this. They do this twice a year, Cedar Woolley RISE, and so this is the first for this year. And last but not least, I was nominated and received the AWC Legislative Priorities Committee Appointment. So, I will be representing the city on the AWC Committee. So, and that is all I have at this point. Moving on to public comments. So, anybody who would like to make public comment, I'll start with people in the audience, and then I'll move to people online. If there's anybody online, please give your name and address, and try to keep it to under three minutes. So, is there anybody who would like to speak tonight? Public comment?
Good evening. Last meeting, we were all finally able to acknowledge on record the police shooting of David Babcock by Officer Maxwell Rosser on February 16th. Mayor Johnson, I sat with your comments over the last couple of weeks, and while I'm relieved the situation was finally addressed on some level, I remain unsatisfied. So, I thought this week I would share why an incident such as this one angers someone like me, a law-abiding, tax-paying citizen who didn't even know the victim. I watched the body camera footage of the incident, and what I saw were spike strips being used as an initial attempt by Cedar Woolley Police to stop a moving vehicle. No sirens, no lights, no loudspeaker. I saw the car swerve off the road to avoid the spike strips, and then I saw Maxwell Rosser open fire on the vehicle, resulting in the driver being shot in the back of the head, all over a suspected stolen vehicle that, according to the Babcock family, wasn't even stolen. And even if it was, last I checked, the punishment for stealing a car isn't the death penalty. Let me remind everyone here that suspicion alone is not a crime. Let me also remind you that nearly every vehicle out there is insured, and as far as I'm concerned, an insured object isn't worth a human life, period. And thankfully, the law of the land that you all just pledged allegiance to agrees with me. Now, I of course have no choice but to let the investigation play out, but here's where I start to lose my patience. Maxwell Rosser gets to sit on paid administrative leave after shooting a man in the back of the head. With no end to the investigation in sight, he gets to continue taking our tax dollars. And according to you, Mayor, once this investigation is over, you're going to hold another one. So, is Maxwell Rosser just going to be sitting on the city payroll indefinitely until you all figure out that cops shouldn't be shooting people in the back of the head? Chief Tucker said just last meeting that sometimes people steal cars with children in them. What if there was a child in there when the officer opened fire? How much more reckless do the officers involved have to demonstrate themselves to be in order for true action to be taken? When any of you mess up at your day jobs and it results in someone's death, do you get a multi-month taxpayer-funded vacation, or do you lose your job? Officer Rosser has demonstrated himself to be trigger-happy and irresponsible with his weapon, and thus dangerous and incompetent in a high-pressure situation he was supposedly trained for. We shouldn't need to wait for an investigation to tell us what the body camera clearly shows us, that Maxwell Rosser is unfit to be a police officer and should be stripped of his gun and badge. This brings me to how the Council has handled this situation and what has been said in lieu of the transparency Cedar Woolley deserves. Meeting after meeting, I hear some of you use your time to consistently fearmonger about how much crime is going on within our city. For example, rather than doing something semi-transparent like reading the smart investigation reports, Chief Tucker has used past meetings to talk about the horrific, life-threatening crime of graffiti. Last meeting, Chief Tucker talked about an increase in stolen vehicles on the same week the Council finally brought up a police shooting stemming from a wrongly suspected stolen vehicle case. Now, you guys tell me, is that irony, or is that propaganda? And up until last meeting, the only council member to publicly comment on the incident was Mr. Lavaca, who in a Facebook comment irrationally threw blind support to the police without the body camera footage being available for another five weeks. Council Rep. Lavaca also used his time last meeting to ramble on about a guy who he thought may have attempted to steal something, and then somehow tied that to fearing for the safety of him and his wife when they go into a store. Mr. Lavaca, how many times have you gone into a store in your entire life? Of those times, how many resulted in active robberies? My guess is that percentage is astronomically low. If you're fearing for you or your wife's lives when you go into a Rite Aid, your fears are irrational, and thus your fearmongering is unjustified. And in case nobody told you, that thing standing behind you is your shadow. It's harmless, I promise. So while the rest of you remain conveniently incapable of commenting on a police shooting where the officer was very clearly in the wrong, you freely continue to push this BS narrative of how crime-ridden Cedar Woolley is. I'm guessing in an attempt to justify situations like the murder of David Babcock. But if Cedar was so unsafe, why did the Chief say last meeting he's taking a multi-week vacation? Shouldn't he have stayed here to protect us all from the massive increase in crime and stolen vehicles he claims is happening? And if crime is constantly increasing around us the way the Chief claims, doesn't that mean he and his department are incompetent? Shouldn't we be replacing the Chief if he's unable to deliver the safety and security his six-figure salary suggests he's delivering? Less than a month after this incident, the Chief showed up to a meeting, not to offer any information on the shooting, but instead did not so subtly ask for more money in the budget because of rising gas prices. When I don't budget correctly for gas, I don't get to my job, and then I lose said job. I fail to see how the SWPD's inability to responsibly budget for gas fluctuations means they should get more taxpayer money. Perhaps if they budgeted for more for gas and less for things like, say, spike strips, for example, David Babcock would be alive today. I close by saying, you don't get trust without transparency, especially from those entrusted to uphold the law. Police are given the guns, the authority, the immunity, and the training, and still get to claim they feared for their lives despite dangerous situations literally being in the job description. Untrained, unarmed civilians continue to get, are, continue to be given zero benefit of the doubt while police are given all of it, and Mr. Lavaca's Facebook comment is proof of that. This situation goes beyond what political aisle you walk in, or whether you liked or even knew David Babcock. This is about doing the right thing, no matter how difficult, to help promote a more honest, informed, and safe Cedar Woolley. One simple, bare minimum step, I believe, can be taken to help reestablish some trust would be for the police representative, who's not here today, but hopefully will be future meetings, for the police representative to take an extra 30 seconds and read the smart investigation reports at future council meetings. While I personally feel the smart reports are overly vague in their content, I would see this as an act of good faith, and I believe it would go a long way in providing some transparency while the investigation plays out without actually tampering with the investigation itself. I hope I've been successful in helping you all understand why situations like these, as well as what's said and not said, at these meetings matter so much to someone like me. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? And looking online, I don't see anyone either. So, I am going to close this public comment. It is 6:23, and we are going to move on to unfinished business. And we are looking at, Nikki, it looks like it's you, the adoption of Ordinance 2008-22, having to have to do with utility accounts.
So, that one was Debbie's. However, I can certainly handle it. This particular code provision, as we discussed last time, is being requested so as to give finance a bit more flexibility and allow for the use of collection agencies. It is a pretty simple addition to the code, and it is one that is commonly found in other jurisdictions, and so I don't think there's anything controversial about it, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Nikki?
There, I do have questions.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. Councilman Allen?
If you will allow me, okay. And I brought this up at a previous meeting, is, I know we had a city attorney a few years ago that would let people off the hook, and then two or three years later, they were still on the hook. How do we keep the repetitious bills from amassing again?
So, the city has multiple tools that, in its tool belt that it can use, one of which is liens, and the city is actually pretty good about using liens. We've got quite a number of liens that are out there that we have been working on, either foreclosing on or getting judgments on, or we get those satisfied when the property changes hands. This is an additional tool that can be utilized to try and collect on that, so it's actually intended to make it easier for us to collect, but it doesn't interfere in any way with the other tools that we have.
Okay, Nikki, you hit a magic word. You said, "we'll try to collect." You can't get blood out of a turnip, but how long can the city be sapped out of its due, the due amount owed to them for utilities and services?
So, you know, that's one of those questions that, so, the statute of limitations on accounts receivable is six years. So, if we wanted to sue them, we could sue them within six years, but of course, as you've said, we can't get blood out of a turnip. We use the lien process if we want to try and attach to the property itself, which we can then foreclose on, but that becomes complicated because foreclosing is a, is a long process. It ends with the sale of a person's home, and it's a lot of money and effort to recover funds. So, usually we don't do things like that unless it's a really high balance. Collections is another way that we have available to us to try and get that money back, but the reality is we have six years to sue. We can utilize lien foreclosure processes, we can send them to collections. Those are kind of our main options.
So, we just kind of brush it off and forget about it? Is that what the bottom line is?
I don't actually think that's the bottom line. I think that your finance department does put a lot of effort into trying to collect, and there's certainly been a number of liens and such that have crossed my desk, and this was just another, another attempt by finance and legal to try and come up with new ways to get the city's money back.
And I concur, because I have to sign up on those as well. And in fact, I just went through a stack of them and placed them in the Finance Director's box so she can sign them when she gets back. But our finance department does an excellent job in collecting those fees that are due, so, yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, so if there's no other comments or questions, this is unfinished business, so we are looking for action. Again, this is Ordinance Number 2008-22, adding a collections on delinquent utility account provisions, including write-off on uncollected debt. Do we have a motion? Is the Council interested in giving of a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2008-22.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. And no vote is a vote. New business, Ordinance Number 2009-22, Amending Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, Chapter 10.41, Stopping, Standing and Parking, to update certain provisions related to parking infractions. And I don't see Lieutenant McElwraith here. So Nikki, do you mind taking this one as well?
Absolutely not. So this actually came about as a request from the Police Department and the court. There was a situation where we couldn't quite figure out the appropriate penalty for a particular infraction, and that is because we didn't have the RCWs incorporated into code, and it just wasn't clear, it wasn't clear the correct amount. So what we've done here is essentially adding a penalty section that incorporates the RCWs related to infractions, parking infractions, and the penalty schedules contained therein, so that we don't run up against these situations where we don't know the proper infraction amount again.
All right. Any questions at all for Nikki on this? This is a first read, but were you looking, are they looking for an action tonight on this, or can this wait?
Well, that's Council's prerogative. Certainly, they're welcome to take action if there isn't any questions or concerns. If they would like to do so, they certainly can.
All right. So I will put it out there. Is anybody who wants to make a motion, or you wanting to see this come back? Either way is fine.
I think maybe come back, have a little bit more time to think it over and read it through, if that's right.
Okay. All right. No problem. Thank you. Councilman Lavaca. Okay, that is it, actually, for our business. We are now going to have a executive session, RCW 423144B. And I make the announcement. I also want to let you know that the next meeting is May 4th. And for all of you who are in attendance, I want you to know that this meeting now is adjourned. We will not be coming back. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.